Hello and welcome. My name is Forrest Longman and I am the current president of City Club. The mission of City Club is to inform, connect, and engage our community to strengthen the civic health of our region. We emphasize civil conversation and listening to others. Next Wednesday, we'll have a special additional City Club meeting to present a forum for the Bellingham City Council candidates. In the at-large position, Christina Michelle Martins will face Russ Woodby, and in Ward Six, incumbent Michael Liloquist will face Eve Sampson Marcus. As always, I'd like to thank all of our volunteers who make our programs possible. I'd also like to thank KMRE Radio Board Member Robert Clark, who is producing today's program, and BTB 10, who will be broadcasting it to their viewers. I'd also like to thank our sponsors for their support. They are Larson Gross, Lemmy Commercial Company, Danny Neal of the Molyak Group, the Opportunity Council, Pacific Continental Realty, Unity Care Northwest, Village Books, Western Washington University, Wacom Community College, Wacom Community Foundation, and Bruce and Claudia Dezen. We appreciate our sponsors greatly, but it's the members that make City Club. Membership dues help us bring great programming like Rick Steves and Jane Fallows. If you're not a member or your current membership has lapsed, I'd encourage you to join or renew. For all of our current members, thank you for making this programming and community possible. We welcome your questions today. If you have a question, please type it in the Q and A box and hit Enter. Finally, I'd like to turn things over to Jane Fodenberger. Jane is the Chair of the City Club Program Committee, and she will introduce the candidates and moderate today's program.
Thank you, Forrest. Today, we have two county council races, District One and District Three. Candidates will be elected for four-year terms. Incumbent Todd Donovan is running unopposed for reelection in District Two. And incumbent Barry Buchanan's opponent of the at-large seat declined our invitation. We will hear briefly from Barry later. We will start with District One candidates, Kaylee Galloway and Eddie Urie. You all are probably familiar with the format by now because our listeners have listened to this many times. The questions will be rotated. So as to who goes first, each person will get 90-second opening, and then I'll begin with the questions. Each candidate will get 90 seconds to answer. And the green box, we're going to have a little screen up here, as you see, that says timer. When it's green, you're answering the question. When it turns yellow... Yellow, yellow, where are you? It means you have 15 seconds left. And when it turns red, that means you must stop, and we're pretty strict about that. And I'm just going to do it by alphabetical order, last name, since we didn't have time to go through the ritual of tossing coins and stuff. So let's get started, and we'll start with Kaylee first. And this is your 90-second time to introduce yourself.
Thank you so much for having me here today. My name is Kaylee Galloway, and I am running for Wacom County Council District One. Thank you to the people of Bellingham for trusting me with your vote in the primary, and I hope to earn your vote again. This is an incredibly important race for all of us. It's an opportunity to elect a young person with fresh energy and informed perspective to the county council and set the stage for that next generation of leadership. As the daughter of small business owners and healthcare providers, my values of hard work and service run deep in the foundation of my upbringing and throughout my commitment to serving our community. These values shape me as a student leader at Western and through my service at the local, state, and federal levels of government. I'm running for office because I want to make a difference in this community that I love and have called home for the last decade. I want to see increased representation of young people, and I want to focus on effective, community-driven policy that empowers those around me. I want to see our government work better for everyone, focusing on solutions we need for today and for generations to come. We must support our local economy, protect our workers, and fight to keep our families and environment safe and healthy. This means combating the effects of climate change, as well as making sure our housing is affordable and investing in modern infrastructure. And I am proud of my years in government service. I have listened and learned. I have brought people together to help find a path forward and develop good policy solutions. And I look forward to continuing this work as your next county councilwoman. I look forward to the opportunity to share more about my vision and to earn your support and vote on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee. And now it's Eddie's turn.
Hello, I'm Eddie Urie, and I'm hoping to serve as your next Wacom County Council member from District One. For over a decade of living, learning, working, and growing here in Wacom County, I've chosen to make my life here like many of you, in part because of the strength and richness of our community, and also because I was able to make a living working in public policy on climate and energy for a local nonprofit, where I learned the ins and outs of Wacom County government. And through this all, also, you know, living as a renter, watching folks get priced out of town, seeing how these challenges that we're facing have gotten worse from climate, housing affordability, our water supply being threatened with pollution and overallocation, any growing inequality and justice. And the more I come to know the diverse communities here, the more I've come to believe that we hold the solutions to these great challenges. And though, sure, not one council member or government entity can solve them together through collaboration, cooperation, organizing, volunteering, and working together, we can solve them. And I want to be a conduit for change and working with all of you in the community across differences where there's disagreement and conflict. I've learned a lot over how to work with folks from all stripes to accomplish ambitious goals and get things done. And this is a pivotal and transformative time that we're living in. Though there's great uncertainty, there's also great opportunities to shape a better future for ourselves and our next generations as our county grows. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Eddie. All right, first question, and we will switch because Kaylee went first. We'll let you go first this time, candidate Urie. You are both known as progressive candidates. What qualities do you bring to the table that set you apart and that would encourage voters to choose you?
Would I go in first?
Yes.
Well, one is my experience through, you know, both professionally and volunteer role, working in advocacy on some of the, you know, major issues faced in our county from, you know, climate, housing. I served on the Wacom Housing Alliance, worked with the Bellingham Tenants Union, and environmental issues and justice. So I've been working through government from the outside for a long time, engaging in often controversial and conflict-ridden issues. And this is an area I've found that I've thrived, and I know qualms about engaging in, you know, tough challenges that may, you know, form strong opinions or opposition even, but when it comes to it, I believe, you know, our seven council members, our county altogether, we need, the goal of policy should be to reach consensus, to balance competing interests, and find solutions that can work best for everyone. And that means you have to engage folks, bring them in, meaningfully dialogue and craft solutions together. And so I gained a lot of experience doing that, working through, for instance, the Cherry Point Amendments, industrial land use regulations for the oil refineries. And I want to take that experience and bring it to working on all our great challenges. And I believe, you know, I'm prepared, I understand how to, you know, the policy process, how to craft legislation and work it through, and understand that, you know, we really need to step up and be doing more than at a greater pace than we have. So I think I'm uniquely positioned to serve and serve the people here.
All right, and now Kaylee.
Thank you so much for this question. I absolutely want to highlight my track record of public service here, having served at the local, state, and federal levels of government. I do believe that I have the background that's going to set me up for success as your next county councilwoman. I got my start in government at the student level at Western Washington University. I ran on campus and won Student Body Vice President for Government Affairs. And that's where I got my start, working at the local level, advocating for safe housing and affordable housing, childcare, affordable and accessible higher education. From there upon graduation, I moved out to Washington DC and dipped my toe in what it was to work on the Hill, working for US Senator Maria Cantwell. I had a chance to move home and work for Congresswoman Del Bene, doing outreach in Wacom and Skagit Counties. And I currently work for the state legislature for Representative Deborah La Canoff here in the 40th Legislative District. And for a bit last year, worked for Senator Representative Sharon Schumake as well. And I volunteer on two local boards, one at the city level, the Community Development Advisory Board, where we work on affordable housing issues and human services, and the Climate Impact Advisory Committee. So as you can see, I have a long track record of public service and serving our community here. And I have a multi-disciplinary approach and knowledge base to how I approach some of the issues most pressing in our communities. So I'm really going to be about engaging folks, leaning on those trusted relationships, building bridges across not only all levels of government within our county, but across our state, and making sure we're bringing bold and creative solutions to this next generation of problems. So I'm very excited, the opportunity to continue my service for you all. Thank you.
All right, the next question is, what do you think is the biggest challenge facing this county, and how do you plan to address it? And this would be for you, Kaylee. Going back and forth.
Thank you so much. I think one of my biggest priorities, hopefully as your future county councilwoman, is focusing on our climate crisis. As somebody who has worked very diligently over the last year and a half as a co-author of our updated Climate Action Plan, I really see the county's opportunity to take bold action as we start to address climate resiliency and reducing our greenhouse gas emissions in both the built and natural environments. And so for me, it's all about approaching in the built environment, thinking about our land use, thinking about building decarbonization, renewable energy, infrastructure, and what comes with that is good sustaining living wage jobs and union jobs. And also thinking about our natural environment, really working to preserve our water resources, our salmon, focusing on habitat restoration and ecosystem services, focusing on keeping our working lands productive, and that includes agriculture and forestry. And so I think that is going to be one of the biggest challenges I think our community is going to face is actually finding the courage to take bold action because the climate crisis is knocking on our door. It is not waiting any longer. And it's something that we feel here at home, be it through the most recent heat wave and the impacts to our most vulnerable communities. We must also, through our conversations around climate, continue to uphold our tribal treaty rights and thinking about salmon recovery. And we also must address the water issues here, and I believe in support in the NOCSAC adjudication process and believe that we can come to the table in good faith and negotiate our water rights and making sure that there is plenty of resources for the next generations. Thank you.
And Mr. Urie. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Was it the greatest challenge?
Yes.
Though I agree with Kaylee that climate is an enormous challenge for us, and really the solutions we need are often most handled at the local level. And that's a top priority and something that, you know, overarcs over all the decisions we make in our growth and development and planning and infrastructure. What I would say is that is really the greatest challenge relates to growing inequality, and particularly through property values, ownership, and the lack of affordable housing for too many in our community, where, you know, the median wages here simply don't line up with the average cost of housing, whether it's a rental or a home. You know, folks have seen that even in the last year, home prices have risen on average 25%, and that's been, you know, a continuing pattern. And so, you know, we need to think outside the box here. This isn't just simply a problem of supply and demand. Fundamentally, the market can't deliver affordability when housing is both in, you know, a capital investment with or for a return. That's in conflict with its purpose of being a home for people. And I do believe that all residents in our community can have safe and accessible and quality housing and access to safe shelter. It's possible. There's the will. There is the land. There's the money. It's how we do it. And how do we do it fast enough to build thousands of units in the next four years? And so we need to, the county can play a major role in acquiring and designing land for permanently affordable housing, supporting proven models like the Community Land Trust, and it's going to be a major project to work on. So I'll be a top priority for me.
Assuming that COVID has driven even more challenges to mental health, what role can the county play in addressing these mental health challenges that our county faces? And it's you again. Mr. Urie.
Mental health is an important part of, you know, personal and public health as any aspect of it. We do know that, you know, there's, you know, we can take, our county can showcase some successes and having several clinics around town that provide community health service. And yet, some of those clinics have cut those services in the last year. My partner was a mental health counselor or is, has worked in community health clinics the last five years, and I've seen how, you know, these folks doing this job, these difficult jobs in the frontline, they're underpaid, they're overworked, there's burnout and turnaround all the time. So we need to not only invest more, not only in dollars, but actually look at how these systems work, how we can make them more accessible and reach people and reach everyone that should have it. So I take that as a major priority. You know, obviously, it intersects with our crisis of homelessness and addiction, and, you know, as folks are, you know, while, you know, housing first is a first step for stability, simply, you know, trauma and pain that people are in currently or in the past has major impacts on their ability to do anything and be successful and live a good life. So, you know, mental health, you know, there's a model where we're distributing funds, you know, to not directly through the county. The Health Department, I think, can play a better and larger role in this. And, you know, that requires extra staffing, both the access funds and do administer programs. And I think we need to look at it critically, but yeah, this is really a key issue all around for workers, families, folks of all ages and in all situations, but especially our most marginalized and vulnerable neighbors.
All right, Ms. Galloway.
Thank you. I too agree that this is a huge issue facing our community and one that has certainly been exacerbated by the pandemic. First and foremost, I believe that we at the county level absolutely need to be fostering relationships and coordination and collaboration with all levels of government, as this is not just a county issue, right? We're seeing a role and responsibility of the city, the state, the federal, and tribal governments. And so really leveraging the trusted relationships I've built over the years with all those different levels of government. I think we can really approach this issue collectively. I have a few ideas. One is, I believe we need to heavily invest in early intervention, and that looks like providing our schools with the appropriate behavioral health services. When we hear from schoolteachers and counselors that they have one behavioral health specialist per multiple schools, it just simply isn't enough. And our students at a young age need to have the resources. Two, I support a permanent supportive housing model and really believe that as we start to address the co-occurring crises that are, as we address whole human health, that we are able to provide folks housing, but also the support services necessary to be successful as they transition into the new chapter in their life. I also believe behavioral health intersects with our criminal justice system. I am a supporter of diversion programs and really thinking about ways in which we can prioritize more restorative approach to our justice system, and that includes really providing the behavioral health services. And lastly, just continuing to work with our healthcare providers and making sure that they're being supported in the funding that they need. Thank you.
So Maureen, it looks like there's some people in the chat. Would you like to ask some questions from the audience?
Actually, Jane, we have so far 73 attendees, but no questions in the chat.
Oh, I see 12, but I must be...
There are comments in the chat, but nothing in the Q and A, which is the function that we're hoping people will use for the...
All right.
So somebody tells me you might have a few more.
I have a few more up my sleeve, so. Do you agree that farmers can make more money selling their land than growing food? If so, how can we encourage and protect our farmland? And this would be for you, Kaylee.
Yeah, you know, I have a strong history of working with our local agriculture and farmers here. You know, when I worked for Congresswoman Susan Del Bene, I was her boots on the ground and updating the federal farm bill and really building those relationships between the farmer and government. And so for me, I absolutely see the value in preserving and protecting our farmland, and I've worked to do so at the Wacom and Skagit Counties and believe that we need to provide an environment where our farmers can still have viability. I believe there's a tremendous number of benefits of keeping our food system local. Aside from supporting local economy and local jobs, and we're also reducing our emissions with transportation. We're also continuing to nourish our bodies with local healthy foods. So I absolutely agree that we need to do what we can to protect farmland, to protect the economy that comes with it, and frankly, the culture that comes with it. But I think we also need to expand the way we think about farming, and so I'm open to ideas about what this could look like in terms of expanding to fisheries and aquaculture and shellfish industries, what it could look like expanding into cannabis. So I'm really have been working with Rep La Canoff on the idea of a Washington State Farm Bill and what that could look like here in our local community. And I'm really excited to see how we can also ensure that our agriculture is climate resilient, that we continue to manage water resources, that we ensure that we're also thinking about renewable energy. So agriculture really is a common thread throughout a whole community. And last but definitely not least, making sure that we are protecting our frontline farm workers and making sure that they're provided safe and healthy workplace conditions and the services that they need. Thank you.
And Mr. Urie.
As we all know, Wacom County is a rich agricultural history, culture, tradition that continues to this day. But like, you know, everywhere in America, there's been, you know, through the, you know, geopolitical global trends of, you know, globalized food market, we've seen this pattern of consolidation of, you know, farmers selling land into larger, you know, larger farming businesses, aggregates, especially in the dairy production here because of these costs. Now, so oftentimes you'll hear regulation get blamed as a culprit, but I don't believe that's the case. I think, you know, the role of government can be to support our farmers, especially our county. It's, you know, there's lots of ways we can do this in supporting, you know, conservation and land stewardship, and, you know, through purchasing agreements and connection within our local economy to keep food here. Food, you know, the food being sold locally. I know we all love eating, you know, fresh local produce and enjoying farmers' markets out in the county here in the city, but it's expensive, right? And that's an irony of, you know, of our system, that, you know, what's grown here costs more. And, you know, there's ways that through, we can, you know, work with, you know, partners and, you know, you know, PUD and private sector and utilities as well for leasing opportunities where, you know, some under-legalized parts of farm properties can, you know, be cited for renewable energy like solar panels, wind turbines, we can support with waste management and anaerobic digesters and, you know, increase the sustainability of farms, also giving them some like extra income streams and benefits to them. So, and I, well, and more I could say, but.
Jane, I do have a question or two now.
I do see a couple of questions there now, so go for it.
Very good. Okay, so I guess this goes to Ms. Kaylee Galloway. What would you do at the county level to develop high-speed internet broadband to as many residents as possible?
Yeah, you know, I would say broadband has been a hot topic for many years now, one that we've absolutely demonstrated a need for. And it's still a little bit baffling to me that we still haven't implemented this basic utility and infrastructure throughout our counties faster. So, for example, I think first and foremost, we need a cooperative approach between our port, PUD, county, and cities to ensure that we are executing high-speed broadband, and I think we also need to include our tribal governments as well. I think we need to be leveraging state and federal resources to make sure it's well-funded. I think we need to promote policies around dig once and open access. I think that's really important as we continue to move towards a municipal-owned broadband, ensuring that it remains accessible and affordable for all residents. Really focusing too on that last mile and ensuring that our rural communities don't get left out. I think this pandemic really highlighted the absolute need for broadband as a central utility as we continue to work from home, school from home, shop from home, and receive healthcare from home. So just the lack of access to broadband and affordable broadband is absolutely an equity issue. And so continuing to bridge those divides as we work to build out our infrastructure for the next generation. So yeah, I'm open to policy ideas, and I just want to get her done.
All right, thank you. Same question to you, Mr. Eddie Urie.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question, please?
Certainly. Oh, shoot, let's see. Give me a moment here. What would you do at the county level to develop high-speed internet broadband to as many or to get high-speed internet to as many residents as possible?
Right, of course. I also see this as a top priority. It's really a shame, you know, our PUD and local governments could have been working together and building out, you know, open access public broadband fiber network 20 years ago, ahead of, you know, where it really became even greater issue of inequity during this pandemic. Folks having to work or go to school from home and relying on it, you know, for all their basic needs, you know, breaking through social isolation across the board, the lack of that internet service and the disparities in it were really a tragedy. Now, there's been some efforts made in the last few years, of course, with the port and other PUD and county and city and lots of, you know, there's been a lot of talk and things thrown around, and not a lot has gotten done at the pace we need to. I think part of that has to do with, you know, that it's a very technical issue, and there's a heavy influence of telecom industry professionals with some conflicts of interest engaging in those processes and planning with their local officials. And it's just, it's a challenge. Now, like Kaylee said, I do believe we should have an open access broadband network. You know, we can start by laying what's called dark fiber in conduit that is, you know, owned by the utility, but the internet service providers can be an open market and competition, not, you know, to one or a chosen few providers or a monopoly. And also potentially have a public option as an internet service provider. And I know Lemmy Nation is making great strides right now in doing this. I think they're really setting an example. We can work with them and with Skagit County as well and connect and bring the service to all of our folks as an essential utility.
Thank you. I hate to cut this off because, you know, this is very interesting discussion from both of you. And it's nice to see younger people running for office too. I ready for your closing statements already? And Kaylee, since you started to begin with, why don't we let Eddie go first this time?
As I said, we're living in a transformative time with enormous opportunities before us despite, you know, the uncertainties and challenges of our, you know, divided political climate, you know, our global climate. Our community holds the solutions to solve these things, and I think the county, working with others, plays a central role. And, you know, my priorities will be working with all of you on strengthening infrastructure with, and that means everything across the board, you know, housing, childcare, healthcare, those are infrastructure too, as well as our poor utilities, transportation, electrifying and decarbonizing, supporting workers and families, sustaining our water supplies, protecting from pollution, and in conserving, we can democratize government, foster greater participation, safeguard our communities, and house all residents with sustainable and affordable, accessible housing options for, you know, all kinds of folks. And I would love to serve the people of Wacom County. I'd be honored to have your support. I've been grateful for the support I've gotten, receiving sole endorsements from the Wacom County Democrats, the Washington Conservation Voters, the Sierra Club, the Riveters Collective, you know, been supported by many of our local elected officials, Representative Ramos, Executive Soodoo, Assessor Tsar, PUD Commissioners, Atul Deshmani, Christine Grant, county council members Donovan and Be Canada and many others. And I know these are folks that I can work with, you know, across our differences to get things done for you. So I'd be happy to answer more questions. You can go to my website, eddyforwhat.com. Call me. I'm available. I'm accessible to anyone here in our community all the time. So look forward to engaging more and see you out there.
And now you, Kaylee.
Thank you for being here again today. I'm grateful for the opportunity to share with you all some of my vision and values and my goals for Wacom County. Again, as somebody who's worked at the local, state, and federal levels of government, have built those trusted relationships. I do believe I'm ready to start on day one, and I am eager to bring my fresh and multi-disciplinary perspective and energy to counsel and roll up my sleeves to get the work done. As the challenges our communities face will require new creative and bold solutions as the status quo hasn't worked. We must address our multifaceted and co-occurring crises, and so for me, it's really about focusing on recovery and resiliency. And that includes supporting our local economy and workforce development, climate change, water, housing, public safety, criminal justice reform, and the modern infrastructure to make it all possible. I'm committed to empowering those around me and really ensuring that we center equity in all budget and policy decisions that the county makes moving forward. I'm excited for you all to learn more about my campaign. Please visit my website, votekaylegalloway.com. And remember to vote Kaylee Galloway for Wacom County Council District One for the November 2nd general election. Please reach out if you have any other questions. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you both for attending. So time to move on to District Three. So our District Three candidates are Tyler Bird, who is the incumbent, and Rebecca Lewis, who is their challenger. And once again, I'm going to resort to to the alphabet to say who goes first. So we're going to let Tyler Bird give his 90 seconds. 90 minutes, Senate. I keep wanting to give you more time than you get. 90 seconds of introduction of who you are and what you think. Okay, Tyler.
I couldn't use 90 minutes if you gave it to me.
I know you could. You all could.
My name's Tyler Bird. I'm running for Wacom County Council in District Three for reelection. I grew up here in Wacom County. I was raised by a single mom, four kids. We lived in this little low-income family apartment complex run by HUD in Ferndale, 500, 600 square feet. And as the oldest of the four, my mom, she was the first to go to college and get a degree, and so it really fell to me to help the family. And through high school, I worked three jobs. I watched the kids and babysat and took care of everything as much as I possibly could. And since then, I've moved in, you know, that was about 20 years ago. And after that, I spent about 10 years in finance. I was the youngest managing director of commercial lending and business banking for the community bank that I worked for. I established an association for young professionals in the industry. The, I established a, a association for young professionals in the industry that went national, went nationwide. I married a beautifully intelligent Mexican woman that, uh, fourteen years ago. And we've had two kiddos that were married, uh, we're raising in a kind of, you know, a Mexican-American culture in our, our family. And it's, it's fantastic. Um, after I got out of banking, I got into entrepreneurship and I started my own business, which was, well, advertising, marketing and business operations. And then I purchased another business that I managed to turn around and expand by three times. I have a lot of experience in finance and business operations and I spent my life really engaged in the community and contributing. And, and this was kind of a natural extension of that. And I'm looking to, to continue with your support. Thanks.
Thank you. And now Rebecca.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for having me here today. Hello, my name's Rebecca Lewis. I'm a candidate for Waukam County Council District Three. Since nineteen ninety-eight, my husband and I have raised our little family in the beautiful area of Demming. And for the last twenty years, I've been a public school teacher. And for the last three, I've served as the teachers' union president in Cedar Woolley. And a fun fact, I'm currently on my lunch break for my union duties. During this unprecedented, unprecedented time of change, I've taken a lot of strength and joy in helping others. That includes teachers, students, my members and everyone across, um, not just the Demming area, but also in Cedar Woolley. And now I'm ready to bring that energy to the county council. For far too long, District Three has been the forgotten people of Waukam County. Since we have so many possibilities in front of us, we need to change that narrative. When I'm out talking with voters, I'm hearing that we need to help small businesses recover from the pandemic. Help local farmers recover from the soaring summer temperatures and lack of rain. Create a green economy with high-wage jobs where no one who works full-time lives in poverty. Bring low-cost public internet to District Three and all across Waukam County. Make housing affordability a reality. Help those experiencing homelessness. Ensure those in mental health crisis get the treatment they need outside of jail. Add more transit stops, bike lanes, street lights, all throughout parts of District Three. And protect our gorgeous environment in the district, like Lake Waukam's drinking water, Lake Samish's watershed and the Noakesack River salmon. This election is about the next generation, our kids and grandkids. What type of environment and infrastructure needs can we lay the groundwork for now to provide them a cleaner and safer, sustainable future? Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to remind our audience to type some questions into the Q and A, not the chat. And, um, I will start, but, um, I'm expecting your questions to come in too. So, um, if elected, what would be the main priorities you would choose to support and to fund? And that's for you, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Jane. Um, my number one priority right now is infrastructure. And infrastructure not only includes our roads, our bridges, our culverts, but it also needs to address our childcare deserts, our medical deserts. But number one is the internet. Um, we must begin to adopt the internet as a public utility legally classified as such. And make sure we are working with the PUD and the port with policies that are open access, dig once. So that way we have a competitive nature. We have the ability to compete with those companies as a public utility that is provided at a low cost to our citizens. This needs to happen. We have seen through the pandemic that many of us that do not have access to high-speed internet, and I am one of them. Even today, if I wanted Comcast and I said, I'll pay you a thousand dollars a month to have high-speed internet, I would not have access to it. And many people across District Three are the same. So we have to do this. This is going to take governed, government-to-government effort, working with all sorts of inner agencies. I see it as one of the biggest things we have to achieve for equality. Because without it, so many folks have fallen behind. That includes education, um, businesses and all the other things that the internet runs on now.
Okay, same question to you, Tyler. What priorities would you choose to support and fund?
There are so many things that come in front of us. It's, it's just a huge number of items. And, and we have a, a very limited amount of resources that we're able to contribute. But we do, at the end of the day, we have to be able to prioritize and, and focus on things. When you talk to the community, the largest struggle that we have right now is housing affordability. It's across the spectrum. People are paying so much in housing that they can't afford things like childcare. They're having to move further out to where they don't have access to internet. A lot of them want to live closer to Bellingham, but they just can't either find the housing or find housing that they can afford to. That goes all the way up to CEOs that want to move into town or bring new jobs here. They're not able to bring their companies here and create those jobs because they can't find the housing necessary for their people. We need to invest more money into streamlining our housing process and expanding the housing options that are available to people. That doesn't necessarily mean increasing sprawl or allowing for sprawl. It can mean things like expanding the housing options that are available, adding smaller footprints for tiny homes or ADUs in the county that are already approved. And helping to communicate that message that's out there or helping people to actually add those to their properties to bring more housing online. There's a lot of information and statistics that are out there for this. We need to actually look at it and look at the data. And stop talking about it and actually work on the problem and solve it.
All right. Now that the Cherry Point amendments passed, what is your vision for how the industrial land out there should be developed? And we'll go to you first, Tyler.
All right. They, uh, I'm very much a free market person. And so I would like to see our county actually go out and look for businesses to bring here. But I would like to see that the businesses have an opportunity and an equal opportunity to go out and expand out there. I've talked to some of the, the companies out there like Petrogas that has, uh, thousands and tens of thousands of acres available that, that they're looking to sell and bring on board. So working with them to help find and identify companies or organizations that could come out and utilize that land, whether it's for transportation or it's for warehousing, fulfillment services, or whether it's for green energy projects. I think our job is to help bring those jobs here and make it economical and beneficial for those employers to bring them here and be here. More so than regulating, regulating them.
The same question to you.
So what's really unique and interesting about that area is it's one of the deepest ports in the United States. And so we have so many different opportunities in order to, you know, push different pieces of infrastructure that are tied to green energy, specifically wind, solar. We need to work with our local union organizations and other environmental agencies to see, okay, what do we need to clean up? How do we need to utilize the land? Much like we have with the GP, you know, it's taken a long time for that area to be cleaned out. And now they have the granary. We see condominiums going up. It's a wonderful green space for people of our community to enjoy. And I think we need to do the exact same thing with that area, bringing all the stakeholders together, have some sort of buy-in and can use it efficiently and make sure that it is used effectively. So that way the people of our county have livable wage jobs that have recreation, that are able to feel like it's sustainable and environmentally friendly. And that we bring in all those parties, much like they did with the work group for the Cherry Point Moratorium, and be able to communicate and compromise. As a union leader, that's all I do every day is communicate and compromise and work with people that have different viewpoints. And so that would be my recommendation, recommendation moving forward.
All right. What are your thoughts on the new rules for police enforcement that were passed in the legislature this year? And we'll start with you, Rebecca.
So, you know, policing is always this hot topic area, right? And I think that we need to really work with our first responders. That includes EMS, firefighters and the police. And specifically out in District Three, we are an unincorporated area. So we work mostly with the sheriff's department. And of course the state troopers, because Mount Baker Highway is a state highway. And so talking to those folks, understanding what the needs are, what the challenges are moving forward. In terms of those legislative laws and, and working with the legislative bodies, a lot of those unions worked with those folks to work out those, um, things that we're seeing now. And I understand there's a lot of nervousness about how things are approached with the police. But I think it's our job to make sure that they are funded properly. The police out in the sheriff's department have not been for a very long time. You know, police, they got voted to, they asked for radios because they don't have cell service. That was voted no by my opponent. Um, ballistic vests voted no by the opponent. Tackling our opioid crisis in East Waukam County voted no from the, my opponent. You know, we need to prioritize the things that our first responders, including the police, need. We only have two sheriffs out where I live and that needs to change as well because we do need more support out there.
All right, Tyler.
Those laws had really great intentions. I think we can all look at them and realize that. I think they were terribly executed, unfortunately. And I think that's a representation of having elected officials that don't listen to people that, that are voting based on the high or the headline of an ordinance or resolution, but aren't actually taking the time to do the research and understand what's actually happening and what those causes are and what the effects might end up being. And that's where we end up with things like this where, hey, you know, if you get robbed and the person goes a block down the road, we, the officer arrives, that officer can't arrest them now. I mean, those are issues that should have been resolved and could have been resolved easily if we would actually listen to the law enforcement officers and, and the people that were asking to put their lives on the line to do this job. I think going back and actually going through that process and listening and trying to fix and resolve these issues would be fantastic. As it relates to the things that I owed for, I have been fully supportive of our law enforcement officers. I have voted numerous times for vests and other equipment. We are installing a new radio system, which I did vote for as well. I also was the one to vote for and bring that second officer out to Rebecca's area because we needed additional law enforcement. I'm also the county council member that brought forward and has organized a committee of people from our planning department to our health department, to our law enforcement, as well as our prosecuting attorney's office and me, to form a group to work on the issues that are happening out there that haven't been addressed because we haven't listened to them before there was district-only voting. I've listened to that community and I will.
Sorry, time to stop. All right, Maureen, do you have some questions for these young people?
I do. I do. Thank you very much. And by my calculations, I believe we go first to Mr. Tyler Bird. Does that sound right to you? Terrific. All right. Um, this has been touched on a bit, but we have another question regarding how you see land use and housing working together to lo- lower housing costs.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest things that we could do right now is we could use our economic development funds, so the EDI funds, to hire a contractor, third-party agency that has done this for other counties within Washington, to come in and streamline that process. We've put together a code scrub group numerous times in the past. The last time it got put together, it, they got stuck on the issue of what's trash versus what's refuge. And they didn't get by that and nothing ever actually came of it. Actually, I take that back. What ended up coming of it is instead of condensing the code, it, it came out of it with another fifteen or twenty pages of additional code. That's not what we're trying to do. We have one of the, the largest and most expansive code dockets in the entire state and country. I mean, it's enormous the amount of code that you have to go through. And that's the reason it takes two plus years to actually get a house on the market and to build something right now. We need to get that affordable housing to the families that are here now. We can't afford more people becoming homeless. More people leaving the area or losing jobs or having to downgrade into something that doesn't fit their family. The data says that what we need is we need the middle-income housing that we don't have. Our largest number of people in our county right now are people in that middle-income bracket. And they're looking for those houses in that five, four hundred thousand dollar range. There's nothing for them to buy and it's forcing them because they can't buy a million-dollar house. So they're having to buy down in those three hundred thousand dollar affordable income properties that we're investing in. And they're gobbling all of that up so that it's not available for the people that need it. And those people are becoming homeless. We need to invest in the process.
Thank you.
All right. Same question to you, Rebecca Lewis, and I'll just repeat it quickly. How do you see land use and housing working together to lower housing costs?
So essentially we do need to look at zoning permitting. I am for multi-use, high-density. That needs to happen within the city limits. And then we also need to look at how our area is growing. You know, District Three, we are mostly a rural area. It's the largest in area. So there are a lot of people that live out where I live and we're really happy about that. And we're excited because we love living rurally. I live on twenty-four acres with a well. And, you know, that's the life that I have chosen. And there is affordable housing out there. And I encourage people to come out to District Three. What we are lacking with in terms of our land use and the things that the citizens need out here is the infrastructure. You know, Marshall Hill Road is right now currently falling into the Noakesack River. Oh, sorry, onto the cliffside. Uh, Truck Road is the one that's falling into the, the, um, Noakesack River. And so for us, you know, there is affordable housing. There's, um, we have the land out there for people to build and expand. The issue is we lack the basic infrastructure, um, for us to have a sustainable life. For example, lacking medical facilities, childcare facilities and basic, um, things like the internet. And so we need to make sure we tackle that first for our own citizens that live in reasonable and, um, affordable housing.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have time for another, Jane?
Yes, we do.
Terrific. Okay. So this time to Rebecca Lewis first. Do you support publicly provided internet throughout Waukam County? And if so, what are the barriers to achieving this?
Absolutely yes. It is my number one issue right now. So as I've looked more and more into this issue, there are quite a few barriers, but you know what? We can do this. Jefferson County has done it. The city of Anacortes has done it. Um, we have, are doing resolutions all surrounding this issue. It can be done. What we need to have happen is to work government-to-government. That's working with the PUD, with the port, because they are part of that infrastructure. We also need to work with private companies to make sure that we are getting the fiber optic lines that are needed. We have to adopt policies that set up competitiveness of Comcast, WAVE, Ziply, but also offer that public option for folks that it's accessible and affordable. So the tech and the infrastructure and the working together with those inner government agencies are the barriers, quite frankly. You know, Anacortes started their process with Public Works in two thousand and fourteen and got it up running in two thousand and nineteen. To me, that's too long. It's unacceptable. Our people need it now. So I think we need to take a large chunk of the American Rescue Act funds and put it towards this. They're trying to do infrastructure at the state level. Right now Congress is trying to do it in the federal level. A lot of it will be money for this issue.
All right. And same question to you, Tyler Bird. Do you support publicly provided internet throughout West Waukam County? And so what barriers do you see pushing this?
Yeah, they, I do. And we have a lot of barriers associated with it. And they're the same barriers that Rebecca, well, are causing the issues that Rebecca was referring to with the road falling into the river or Lake Samish with the bridge that's falling apart that hasn't been fixed in years. It's not a matter of us not investing in infrastructure. We're investing millions and millions every single year. And we've gotten more and more grants from Commerce in the state to invest even more in the last few years. The issue that we're running into is our process and our planning and permitting times. It takes three or four years to get through permitting for something, especially if it is anywhere near water or in a watershed. And so those extended timelines and those extended processes are the reason that those problems aren't being addressed. It's not because we're not investing the money to do it. We've been investing this money into the public fiber now for several years. We've been partnered with the port and we've been working on that project. And we just voted to add more money to that. But again, we're looking at three years from now just to get the permits approved before we can even start the process because our structure and our process is so convoluted and takes so long. So can we invest more money? Can we partner with more people? But we're already partnered with Bellingham. We're partnered with the port. We're partnered with PUD. Can we partner with more? Absolutely. Can we invest more money? Absolutely. Will it get us to solve the problem faster? It won't, not until we deal with the root cause, which is our process and the permitting timelines. Our easiest route is to go around and work with private sector and help get those services to them by partnering with people that can implement those projects quicker and more cost-effectively.
Another one from me, Jane?
Sure. Then I'll take the last one.
All right. So one of our listeners would like to know, where do you get your news? What newspapers, print or online do you read? Oh, and I'm sorry, this one goes first to Mr. Tyler Bird. My fault.
Okay, thanks. Um, you know, I read a lot, a lot of news. And so, um, Wall Street Journal. Yeah, every once in a while I'll turn on CNN or Bloomberg. Um, well, not every once in a while for Bloomberg. I usually have Bloomberg running on the side for Bloomberg Business News. And I really stay up to date on the finance side of things. National politics, I think it's one of the big problems with our mental health crisis, to be honest. I mean, it, don't you just feel terrible every time you turn on the news and listen to what's happening in DC or Olympia? I mean, we have elected officials that aren't really our greatest role models, unfortunately. So I tend to state of business news, things that aren't necessarily biased and, that I know and, uh, that I can work with. And that actually help influence what, what decisions I make because they help educate me on what's happening. Because they help educate me on what's happening on a national level as far as trends and economics go. So that I can bring that information back to us and how we deal with our projects here locally.
Thank you. And Rebecca Lewis, same question to you.
Thank you, Maureen. And this is a question that I love in my heart as a civics teacher who teaches students how to read reliable sources. And how to tell if they are reliable. So for me, um I. Read the Bellingham Herald most days, the Seattle Times. Um then many times I'll go to the New York Times. I'll look out at NPR. That's kind of the big one. That's the most unbiased. But you know, I I do a variety of sources, try to get a variety of viewpoints. Um you know, when it comes to factual scientific data, I really stick with experts. And because I think I'm I'm not an expert in every field, nor do I pretend to be. And so for me, it's always going to experts and making sure that I fact check and look at all the different sources. And I read an opinion piece, I will go then and see if that's true or not. By using the system in which I teach my students how to fact check for accuracy, the author's purpose. Um relevancy, currency. And so for me, that is a huge piece of everything that I do every day. In terms of my profession, but also living it and living that value to make sure that I have that variety of sources. And then I check all those things that they are reliable. We do live in the age of, you know, fake news, fake information. Tons of news is spread virally that would not be considered news. And so it's more important now than ever to make sure that we always do that.
Thank you, and thanks to you both. Back to you Jane.
Okay. This is a question that um somebody wrote in and wanted to know because. Several years ago, as you know, we had several proposals for a new jail. Both of them went down. And it was supposed to be on the outside of the Bellingham city limits. Do you think a new jail is still needed and where would you cite it? We'll start with you Rebecca.
So um you know, the jail itself needs a lot of fixing because it is antiquated. I've talked to some correctional officers. There are places that are unsafe. So in that respect, we do need to look at it. It is also far away from the courthouse. So people are denied access to their constitutional rights of due process, speedy trial. So we have to look at those things. But we also have to look at why are we putting people in jail? You know, are people nonviolent offenders, drug abuse, um mental health concerns? Those people do not need to be put in a jail setting. It's not appropriate. It's a waste of money, quite frankly, and it doesn't help them. It also contributes to recidivism and all the other issues that we see, you know, right now concerning our county. So no, a new jail isn't needed. What we do need are different facilities that serve the right purpose. So that way we are helping people and making sure that they are not then turning into violent criminals. Because sometimes when you put people in a jail situation and they have a low level crime, then they are exposed to other things. And then it has this whole domino snowball effect on them and their lives. That is not what we should be doing. That is not the intent. It is our job to help people in the worst moments of their lives. That is our role and our job. And if a jail doesn't do that, then we need to make sure that another facility does.
Tyler.
Thanks. The. I think it's too early to make or decide that question right now, to be honest. They changed and evolved so much in the last few years. With COVID and the number of people that we've had to remove from the jail and and downsize it to the new rules with the officers are having to adhere to. And law enforcement, it's really reducing that jail population, not counting the fact that a lot of cases aren't getting through the trial system. But also the fact that we're investing a ton of money into diversion services right now. And so jumping into, do we have to have another jail right now? I think it's too early to decide because the trend says that. We don't need as big of a jail as we thought we did, and that might continue. And we might need a much smaller jail than we ever anticipated or believed. And so I think that we can postpone on that and wait and invest more in the current jail that we have today. And see what happens after all of this, the craziness is done with with COVID and what's going on in the world right now. With that said, I do agree, eh eh we need to invest more in diversion services and alternatives. And it's the reason that I voted every single time and I have initiated the vote to expand that home monitoring service. We have tripled the size of the program. It's saving us millions of dollars in the criminal justice system. But it's a phenomenal program because instead of putting you in jail, you get to stay at home with your family. You get to stay working at your job. You're not having to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars a day or month. The system and yourself when you lose all of that. The you're still a contributing member of society. You're paying taxes, you're working. It it's the way and those are the type of programs that we should be looking at investing more in.
And one more here. Have there been major gaps in the county's response to COVID nineteen? How do you see the council's responsibility toward ending this pandemic? And it's up to you Tyler, this first again.
There have been major gaps. There have been enormous gaps in our response to COVID nineteen. And I tell you that because I, if you go back and watch, was. I was harping on this and I was pounding on the door and I was sending emails to every elected official in our county. Uh city, port, it didn't matter, right? Saying, hey, we need to establish guidelines. We need to recommend the businesses and organizations what they should be doing. We need to be investing into the infrastrural, into PPE gear for businesses, not just for our. Our employees and our staff and first responders, but for businesses that are going to need it as well. And we failed to do that. I I was sitting in the call center, making calls, collecting and finding every mask you could possibly find. When the county executive and his team were sitting in the next room with the credit cards refusing to pay for anything. Red Brown and I were the only two council members there. We were the ones that drove over to Home Depot and loaded up our cars till gloves were falling out the windows. That Red put on his credit card to drive him back because the county wouldn't pay for it. The same goes for um Cascade Ambulance. I was sitting there with him making those phone calls when he had to put sixty thousand dollars of PPE gear on his personal line of credit. Because we wouldn't actually pay for those funds, even though the credit card and the money was approved and setting there. There's been enormous gaps. And what we need to do is we need to go back and assess what happened and why. And really take a hard look at that because we can't afford to have this kind of thing happen again in the future. Not only that, but we have to be a hundred percent transparent on everything. We need to get everyone all of the information and then explain to them why we're coming to the decision that we've come to. So that they can understand and comprehend for themselves how we got there.
Thank you.
Thank you Jane.
Um yes, we definitely could have done a lot more. I'm a little surprised because my opponent in March of twenty twenty did vote no for COVID response. Um so it sounds like he's changed his tune, which I'm happy to hear that. But it is really important to note- notice that we have to make sure that we are doing what we can to maintain public safety. And that's all of us, right? At every level of government. And what we are trying to do is keep our people safe. And so for me, making sure that people are safe and also being able to have that choice of whatever they feel is right for them and their family. Is looking at our systems and making sure that our systems are functioning and are working. And that people can work, they can feel safe as they go into businesses. They can feel safe as they go into school districts. They can feel safe doing their everyday daily routine, right? And many people today still don't feel safe. Our systems are overwhelmed. The hospital, you know, every day I read in the Herald about our new cases, how the hospital is overwhelmed. Um how they are postponing elective surgeries because there's so many folks with COVID in the hospital currently. And we are a nation that takes care of our sickest people. And we need to do that. And we can't deny anyone their right to make sure that they are safe. Wherever they may be. And so we need to do much more to get on top of this issue.
All right. So now it's time for your uh close and um we'll start with you Rebecca and move to Tyler.
Well, thank you all for having me today and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you. You know, as a council member, I'm going to listen to the needs and concerns of citizens. Experts, stakeholders are going to have a seat at my table. And I pledge to work with everyone addressing the priorities of District Three and Wacom County Council. I'm going to take all that I've learned as a union leader to work and negotiate with people whose views may be different than my own. And work together to compromise. I spent a career working with the public, including managing, allocating and balancing large scale public budgets from local, state and federal agencies. I know how the system works and how to have it work for us. As taxpayers, many of our needs have been ignored. A lot of us joke in District Three that we are the ugly redheaded stepchild of Wacom County, forgotten and left to our own devices. And as as most of District Three is considered unincorporated, and we have no other government officials to represent us other than the Wacom County Council. We have to have strong representation to address our concerns because for too long we have not. As the years have passed by, so has the infrastructure of District Three. I've mentioned many different issues that we have had, you know. Roads falling apart, the internet not working. And year after year, I have wondered why as a citizen, does District Three seem to be forgotten? It's time that this area has someone who knows our struggles and battles, who's lived in the heart of District Three since nineteen ninety-eight. Whose kids went to Kendall, Harmony and Mount Banker Junior and Senior High. And whose lived experiences are the same as her neighbors and friends, all of whom are tired of being ignored and left behind. So I hope I have your support in November. If you'd like to help and volunteer, go to lewisforwacomthree.com.
Thank you. No campaigning, Tyler.
Thanks. Um I'm going to address something Rebecca had said in her last question or answer. Which is that I voted last year against the COVID response. She's referring to a four million dollar blank check that I did vote against. There was no plan and the executive came to us and said, hey, I want you to give us four million dollars to do whatever we want with. I said, absolutely not. I'm willing to make two or three times a week on a drop of a dime. But I want a plan. I want to be involved and I want to know where that money is going and how. Because up to that point in time, we were doing a really poor job and there was zero accountability. And I thought that we had to have more accountability, more oversight, more transparency. And I wasn't about to go ahead and vote for four million dollars that had none of that. And so you're right, I did vote against that. But if you go back or forward beyond that point, you'll see all of the things that I did for our community to fight. For them and help with COVID and invest in our people here locally and support them. With that said. It's one thing to say, hey, I'm going to listen to people and I'm going to work with them. It's another thing to do it. And we hear people campaign on it all of the time. But if you look at my track record, everything that has come forward to us, every major issue. I'm the council member that has pushed to build stakeholder groups, has requested countless time and time again to do so. Whether it's the criminal justice or apprenticeship requirements or Lake Samish's boating ban. The mandatory garbage service versus a community recycling programs, Cherry Point, Drake and Harbors duck hunting programs. Every single time these issues come forward, I ask that we go to the community, we engage them and we listen to them.
Thank you Tyler.
Need to do so.
Thank you both for coming today and for expressing your views and thank you for running for office.
Thank you Jane.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you everyone.
So since his opponent was unable to uh be with us today. We've decided that Barry Buchanan, who is the incumbent at a large in the county council. Can have a few minutes to speak about his goals should he be reelected to the at-large seat. Barry.
Well, thank you Jane, and I want to start by just thanking the uh City Club and the sponsors. And all the members and uh Wacom County voters who are listening today. Uh thank you for being here. I'm Barry Buchanan. I am the incumbent uh at the at-large position A seat. And currently I'm the Chair of the Wacom County Council. Uh I'm a homegrown Bellingham, uh Wacom County person. I uh. My, I'm a fourth generation Wacom County resident. And my wife and I have been married for forty-eight years. We live in Bellingham right now. I am a US Navy veteran, uh went off and did that in my early twenties. Uh came back home in uh about eighty-nine and uh have uh really gotten into public service since. So my background is I I served a term on the wa- on the uh Bellingham City Council before running for the Wacom County Council in twenty thirteen. So I'm now serving uh at the end of my second term, running for reelection for my third. Uh everybody hit on something that's very important to me. It's how I work, uh and that is collaboration, but cross jurisdictional between many of the uh federal. State, local jurisdictions, as well as tribal. And also community collaboration, working with a lot of the uh organizations out in the community that have. Brought forth very, very good initiatives that need uh some attention by their local officials. So some of the accomplishments that we've done through those efforts uh are in criminal justice. I want to kind of touch on some of the things that folks have asked about today. Uh criminal justice reform has been one of the things that I've uh made a top priority in the last four years. Uh we created the LEED program, which is a a law enforcement assisted diversion. Which in which a uh an officer can divert on a low level crime right on the spot. We created the GRACE program, which is the ground level response and coordinated engagement. And that's a, that's a a great, a great program that deals with folks that are are high users of EMS system. And we uh check on those folks regularly. We're in the middle of trying to create a uh alternate response team for some nine-one-one calls. Calls that have behavioral health elements. And I want to touch on that subject just a little bit more later. Uh uh as far as behavioral health goes. As soon as I was reelected in uh twenty seventeen, we formed a listening tour. Uh that went out into the county, seven locations to find out how people felt about the jail initiatives that had failed previously. And the one message that was constant through all geographical and political aspects around our county. Was that we need to focus on prevention and uh and uh. Treatment rather than punishment of folks that have behavioral health and substance abuse programs or problems. And that's why we ended up uh creating a lot of those programs that I just spoke about. We also opened our crisis stabilization facility this year. That's another one of those that uh benefited from uh my cross jurisdictional work as well as others. Working with the state uh to get funding for that. So that is so important to work together with all of our partners who are trying to to make our community a better place. Another issue is climate change and environmental. Uh we created the Climate Impact Advisory Committee, which was talked about a little bit today. Uh they have brought forth their recommendations and we're now in the in the uh course of reviewing that and and getting ready to implement their recommendations. Cherry Point, uh it's been mentioned, that was a collaborative effort to bring forth uh new regulations out there. We created a Lake Wat- Lake Wacom uh stormwater utility that's helping to fund programs out there. We also have been made improvements to our pollution identification and correction program. Which deals with uh agricultural runoff to a lot of our freshwater streams that feed. Uh the uh the bay and other portions uh dealing with our, some of our uh shellfish harvesting areas. Uh we created a C-Pacer program, which is a uh program that allows commercial property owners to apply for loans. Through the property assess, property tax assessment methodology. Uh to be able to do green projects on their commercial properties such as solar. Uh and other and other uh resiliency programs. So those are a lot of the things that we've worked on for climate change. Uh social justice, we're in the middle of forming a racial equity commission. We uh you can look forward to seeing a child and family wellbeing initiative. Uh that's coming out of the task force that was created by this council. So we've just been really, really busy. And I think, you know, the challenges going forward are going to be. Uh homelessness and behavioral health and that. Uh and criminal justice reform and all the things that intersect with behavioral health. I think that's a really important thing. And yes, I agree broadband should be a public utility. And our biggest challenges are last mile and lighting that, some of that dark fiber. So I hope to get your support this November. Thank you.
Thank you Barry. So and thank you to all the candidates who spoke today. I think we all learned a lot. And I really appreciate the fact that they are all running for office. Don't forget to register for the Bellingham City Council races on Wednesday, uh September twenty ninth. This is an extra program they were putting on for City Club. Uh because we definitely wanted to do the council races from county and the city of Bellingham. Um and in October, we will resume our regular schedule, October twenty-sixth. For a panel discussion on the new police reform bill enacted by the legislature. So thank you for attending today and don't forget to register and vote. Thank you.